No wonder nobody is hearing me, it's because my night mic is not turned on. Yeah. Alright, so we've done the acknowledgement, we've asked for additions and we've approved the, adopted the agenda. So we're all the way down to 5.1, the procedure bylaw review. Would the corporate manager like to introduce the topic, I guess?
Um, certainly. So further to our meeting in December, council had a brief conversation about the procedure bylaw and being one of the first kind of orders of business for newly elected council. And they agreed at that time to defer it to committee of the whole, so here we are. Um, the report that's been presented, I apologize for its length. It was a kind of a, it was a, what would be the easiest approach? So rather than marking up the bylaw itself, we opted to kind of go through it within a report for a bit of clarity and hopefully just focus in on the areas either that are recommended for revision or there before you for further conversation depending on your preference in terms of how you conduct your business moving forward. Um, so the first kind of section, which is if you're looking at the PDF version pages three through the beginning of six are kind of administrative recommendations for revision or just cleaning up some redundancies, so. Is it your preference mayor that we go through the bylaw kind of page by page?
Well, I'm, I've got quite a few notes and I think that might be the easiest rather than going back and forth, just to start at the start. Uh, I'll go, I tried to incorporate all of your comments with mine, obviously any of the council who have comments, questions, points that they'd like to bring up, I'll just go on my report, I'll just go from from sticky note to sticky note, then ask if there's anybody who has anything in between.
Certainly.
And we can, we can talk about any of the things that you might have in between. Uh, if everybody's okay with that approach, Council Andrew, you alright with that? Council growing? Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so as I said, just jump, just jump in if we, if I go past a point that that you think is important, so. The first point is under 3.1.2, which is the staff's new section, which is kind of a cover all statement that essentially says, even though we've got this procedure bylaw and even though we're doing our best, if we make a mistake, it's, it's still a a motion or resolution passed by this council is still a motion resolution passed by this council.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, good, so that should take the pressure off.
It's kind of the, you know, saving grace, I suppose, yeah. Yeah, it's all with the best of intentions, of course.
Uh, I got, uh, my next note is at 8.1 on page four of the, of the PDF. Does anybody have anything before that? So it's 8.1 Chair of the Regional Hospital District. We kind of dealt with that this morning, essentially that should come out of here and the Regional Hospital District Board will have a will have a bylaw of its own. So that, that can come right out of there if we're all on agree that. Alright. Uh, the next one I have is page 611, time and location of meetings. Essentially, we talk about starting at 6:30 with the regular meeting and later on, we talk about starting at 5 with the committee, the whole meeting. And so I'm wondering if 10:30 is still an appropriate time knowing that most times we'll probably be starting at 5. I'm comfortable with 9. So with a extension to 10 by resolution of the council. So that's sort of what I thought. Might be appropriate from a time perspective, just because I know the last few meetings have been long and I've seen that after about nine o'clock, we all start to becomes consensus by exhaustion instead of really all of us, you know, really think being at our best. So are there any comments about? For me, it's 11:2C, which is adjourning at 9:00 PM with an extension to 10 with the resolution of council.
I'm sorry if I can interrupt, I can't find my hands up, I don't have my regular computer with me, so you'll have to bear with me, but I'm good till 9:00 and then if by resolution by council, is it majority or everybody has to be in favor?
Well, that's a good question, because if one's, that's a very good question, if one person is really tired, we're really not at our best. So I was thinking, my mind is majority, but you make a very good point, if, if one of us is really in a bad state, it should be, is it, should it be unanimous?
That's what I would like to see, is unanimous.
I'm seeing head shakes around the table that that's the way it should be, so with unanimous approval of council, I will continue to 10.
Okay.
Okay, good.
For me, yeah.
Good. Uh, I think staff had a point at 12 and 1, I think there was just, it was just a to merge two paragraphs together there. Okay. Uh, and another one at 13, 1 and 2 was really just administrative to merge those together to say essentially the same thing. And then at 14, 1, this is the, all public meetings are open. I've got a note to look at that one.
So this just, this refers to electronic meetings? Um, so essentially because we're introducing committee of the whole meetings and I think it was, I believe it was part of the discussion that there was not an interest to start having any meeting that was open, but not allow it to be electronic, so I guess just recognizing um, our evolution to committee of the whole and then updating that provision for electronic meetings to include that any open public meeting is to be, is to be offered electronically, essentially is what that would read.
Right.
Instead of listing the types of meetings, just say that any open public meeting is to be provided.
Right, so if it's open to the public, it's open to electronic participation.
Correct, yeah.
I'm seeing not head, heads nodding around, okay, good. Uh, look at us go. I'm all the way to, uh, part four, council proceedings, paragraph 16.
So are you wanting? Um, oh, you're at 16.
I'm at 16, which is on page 9.
Perfect, yeah.
Uh, and essentially, I think this is where I just wanted to impress upon everybody that all of our meetings, unless they're closed specifically, are open to, uh, because of, uh, closed requirements of legislation. But I had a question about workshops and meetings that we might have with other bodies outside of here. Um, the bands, uh, other organizations, do we need? Is that not a proceeding of ours? Uh, even though we might be out of the, the bear pit, I guess is what I'm looking at, is there opportunity for workshops today, workshops where we're really just uh, thinking about a lot of different ideas and putting them together in a specific manner? Um, should those still be open to the public? Uh, and what about when we're offsite? Have you got any thoughts on that, anybody?
So, um, past practice has been, um, there have been occasions where, for example, there's a council to council meeting, so it's uh, NRM council with a Fort Nelson First Nation chief and council. Those meetings aren't typically open to the public because they aren't convened to be making governing decisions, they are more of a relationship building um, type of meeting. Also where there's been, so in past, we've had lots of different workshops where members of council will be in attendance, but it's not a convened council meeting. So, um, usually there's a record, um, so whether that's outcomes of a workshop, whether that's survey results and those are the outcomes of those gatherings are made publicly available, but they aren't necessarily, um, they aren't a council meeting where the public would attend, yes, they have members of the public in attendance, but they're not convened for that ma, that reason.
Right.
Um, where it gets a little bit more, um, I guess gray is where councils gathered around this table and there's a delegation, maybe they've asked council to attend something, so for example, one would be the annual meeting of the Community Forest Corporation. In that, in that setting, it is not council as a decision-making body, it's council as a shareholder of the CF Corp. Who are attending along with the other shareholder, which is Fort Nelson First Nation, to receive an update from the CF Corp.
Right, so although we might be holding it here, it's not duly convened as a meeting of council?
That's correct, yeah. And typically what we just ensure is that there's, um, a similar venue for the public to be informed and in the, in the occasion of the CF Corp, they also have a public meeting to provide an annual update to the community of their, of their um, transactions or their business.
So because the bylaw says all meetings, should we um, have a note about workshops? I mean, to take everything that you said there and boil it down into a few words. Because it could be, and, and this is one that the public will look at, I, I view, the public will look at this particular section with wide open eyes to say, you need to be doing all your business open, and I think most of us want to do that. But there are times when it's appropriate, and I think workshops where you're really brainstorming and trying, just trying to figure things out are times potentially when the, when, when the public might not, like you said, there may be public there assisting us, but it's not a convened meeting for the purposes of making, is there any comments? Maybe try your best to pull together a paragraph and we'll see what it looks like.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
I think what it might boil down to as well is, um, so it talks about all regional council meetings must be open to the public and the definition section speaks to a regional council meeting, there is a definition for it and then it refers to legislation is what that, what a regional council meeting is. So I think if we pull all of that in, so it's front and center versus having to do the
Yeah.
Little mouse chase, yeah. That might be, that might add clarity as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that takes me to, uh, 20 in the agenda prep section. Uh, staff had some comments here around council from a timing perspective, uh, that that's, it's completely discretionary as to how much time we need with an agenda and, uh, what the cutoffs times should be, and so I just wanted to put that in front of you. And, uh, as well, I'd like to throw the idea out there that the mayor be involved in preparation of of agendas and, um, but let's deal with one at a time, let's deal with the, uh, the timing issue, so the current timing is somebody help me, a cutoff is at 3 o'clock on Tuesday afternoon. The agenda, that's for agenda items to be presented to staff. And that's the Tuesday prior to the meeting. Wednesday afternoon at, I don't know why you picked 3 o'clock, end of day, maybe it was probably good, like are we waiting for our agendas at 3 o'clock just so that we could get? Yeah. Maybe you could just switch it at the end of day on, on the Wednesday prior and then that, that way there's no pressure on you guys to get it out by, by 3:00 PM. And then, uh, so that's the Wednesday. Delegations have to be in by Tuesday. Uh, we'll get our agendas again by end of day on Wednesday, at which time we, we can use them on the following Monday. Everybody okay with that? That seems to be fair to us and gives us some time and it's also fair to staff, I think, so, alright, so we can confirm that that's okay. The next one is, uh, the discussion about the mayor being involved in, uh, 21 and 20 subpar paragraph one, it actually used to be in the municipal act, that the mayor was involved with the, uh, corporate officer. And, and the reason I say that is that I'm a believer that that council should have at least some input with respect to what the legislative agenda looks like. Um, you know, that it, it shouldn't be just only, and I can tell you in the eight years that I was mayor, uh, at the last community I was in, I probably got involved a handful of times where I said, you know, I think this should be on this next agenda. Because in doing that, you're kind of setting the tone uh, for, uh, the CAO particularly to ensure that the, that the reports and things are ready. But if we're doing it, you know, at least a week in advance, there should be enough there, and if the mayor's really on board, he's, he's talking to the CAO and corporate officer weeks in advance, I think this is when this, this should be on that next agenda or because it potentially, we got some great staff here, potentially you might have some staff who are who want to control the agenda of council just by what comes forward on the physical agenda. So are there any thoughts with respect to that besides mine?
I have thoughts on it, I, I think it's a good idea that the mayor actually has the, has involvement or the openness for involvement on, uh, agenda setting for another reason, as a as a council member, um, I think that proper protocol is for, let's say, I want to add something to the agenda. I don't just contact Scott, I would, I would contact the mayor first and say, here's something that I'm thinking that should be on, because that, that's actually just the mechanism, the protocol that we have, I think it makes sense. I didn't realize that it was not used much, actually.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I think later, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about it later. There is, there will be the ability, uh, if we choose to add in, just went right out of my mind, the, uh, when a counselor wants to add something new to yeah, notice a motion, thank you, so it just went right out of my head. Um, that notice of motion is sort of a formal mechanism, what you're, what you're suggesting is not so formal, a mechanism, which I also agree, I think what this is is this is actually getting into the detail, which we're kind of not supposed to do with staff, right, and, um, but the legislative agenda is what we're all, what we're all about, right, so as I said, it's not used very often, but it wouldn't hurt us just to put in there, uh, you know, in consultation with the mayor or words to that effect that that, and I only say the mayor because the mayor is the representative of council, we could pick anybody, I suppose, but the old municipal act did say in participation with the mayor and that, that's why I would use that wording. Are we okay with that? Okay, good. Um, down at 20.3, that's where I put the little circle around 3 o'clock, it's not necessarily, end of day, I think is probably good. Uh, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, 20 subparagraph four. And it's more just for education, make sure that we're all on the same page, because later on, it might it, it might be part of the discussion is that council must not consider any matters not listed on the agenda unless a new matter for consideration is probably introduced as a late item, which later on you'll see has some words around it uh, of this bylaw. So really, it, it really means we can't just be talking about whatever we wanted to council meeting, we, we should really be, be staying strictly to the agenda, uh, unless we as a group decide to change it. And that speaks to preparation, right? That we can't just drop a hand grenade in because we're angry at something and so we make a motion that's, you know, that's completely off the wall, that that potentially causes us all to be surprised, there should be no surprises in what we do. So again, that's just for information, just to make sure that everybody keeps that in the back of their mind, so then it actually comes to the order of proceedings. Uh, staff has a lot of words around the order of proceedings and, and what they think. Uh, I was pretty comfortable, I just want to get to it. Uh, this is in the second half of the report, I think. Yeah. Uh, page six of the admin's report.
On page six of the admin report, just kind of the thoughts around, um, um, the order proceedings and then some potential, well, the first being that notice of motion section, which is what you've described, um, as being a opportunity to introduce late items if approved by council.
So this is essentially the way the agenda is structured. Um, call the orders first. Uh, for me, I think the public comment period should be one of the first things that you do, because you might change your agenda based on what the public has to say about that meeting, so that, that public um, comment period is only about agenda items, it's not a free brawl, right, it's just about items on the agenda. So for me, if that came first, it gives you the ability to sort of listen to what the public is saying based on whatever the rules of procedure around that are, timing and et cetera, how much time they have. Uh, and then we would consider, uh, CAO or council additions and then adoption of the agenda with any changes that might come forward, does that make sense?
I, I kind of look at the, at the other side though, because then you've got public, you're asking for public feedback on a agenda that they don't know yet. Well, in a sense, because you're, you're giving them the free to talk about the agenda and yet there may be additions to the agenda that needed to be introduced first for them to have a complete agenda to comment on. Or there's things that they won't have, have to comment on if they are go first in.
Yeah, I think the agenda is is turned out to the public at the same time as it's turned out to us, so the whole.
Yes, but not the additions to the agenda, whereas the additions to the agenda come along, um, let's say, uh, CAO has addition or two, which happens often enough and then the public don't have opportunity to comment on that, if it's just a horse in a cart, which, I don't know.
I, if I can respond, I think, I think we're trying to stop that to some degree, that additions to the agenda, unless they're pretty minor sort of things, right, and, uh, so basically the public and us would stick to what's on, so they would know what's there. Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Council growing, please.
Thank you, um, so I'm, maybe I'm just a little bit confused, so we are okay, so comments from the public can only address the agenda items, but the agenda hasn't been approved yet. So I'm just a little bit, I mean, I have no issue in switching it up, but um, if we haven't approved the agenda, are, do we somehow make it clear that this comment from the public is only on agenda items, whereas I just think that it would make more sense if it's right after the agenda is approved and then there's comments from the public on the agenda items before council addresses any of those agenda items.
Um, yeah, I'm following you. Uh, so you approve, even though they've all had the agenda beforehand, you're saying that if we approve the agenda and then let them speak to it, because we might change the agenda. We might change the agenda ourselves.
Right, I mean, I, yeah, I can imagine, but yeah.
Can anybody think of a time when that's ever happened?
Well, I guess if we accepted late additions.
Yeah, I guess.
Because there is that provision, right, that you can as a council, if it, if it's has to be dealt with within that time period.
Yes, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. That's the one point that comes forward, if it's urgent.
Yeah.
If it's urgent and then we change the agenda and uh, of course, the public might not know that it's even there to show up because it was not on the agenda package, but if somebody happened to be in the room, that would be the only time that it would, uh, that they'd be able to actually speak on something urgent, because they were there and they heard about it. Unless there was a a, uh, a ground swell, I guess, of people, because it's, it's an urgent item that people have been talking about and so they all come because they want to see it happen, okay, that makes good sense to me. So then, uh, the call to order, uh, council CAO additions. Um, would we approve the agenda at that point or would we let the folks speak? Is there a requirement to approve the agenda that quickly or could there be a, a gap?
There could be a gap, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm hoping I can kind of get your brains thinking about what a ca, council or CAO addition might be in order to maybe help with the order of proceedings, so. So, um, further on in the report on page eight, so I think what would be helpful too is if we start defining what some of these sections are. Um, and so that can be done simply enough just in this portion of the bylaw to give each of those sections a little bit of context, so that people understand what happens in that spot. Um, and to your point, Council growing about the public, um, the public question period, do they know it's only for agenda items? Well, they will if we make that known through our bylaw and then it's available, right? Um, but in terms of the, so when we were developing some of the content here, so the notice of motion section is for where council anticipate, a council member anticipates, um, a topic, they, they'd like to introduce a topic that they are hopeful to have a ultimate decision on, so it's not just a FYI item, it's more of here, here's an event happening and I'd like council to consider sponsoring or there's a letter that I'd like to be written and here's a, and, and I'd like your support to do that, so ultimately a notice of motion is where there's going to be an activity or a direction outcome. Whereas, um, additions are typically something where it's just for, for information. So in, in my mind, we kind of have some duplication there, because we have our, um, standing, standing, um, what do we call it? Standing items for discussion, one of those categories is, is portfolio updates. But we also have our council and CAO addition section. So maybe we have two sections which are actually dealing the very same thing. And it depends on how early in the agenda you want to introduce that, so if you're, if, if, if council's prepared to accept that council and CAO additions are just those kind of, um,
Minor.
Simple, it's simple items, the minor items that are just for, for a heads up or an information, then perhaps those can be addressed later in the agenda, understanding business where council, each council member has an opportunity to do an update versus addressing it as your very first item of business in the evening. Um, we can always use that see it council CAO addition section differently, like maybe that's where you say you, um, introduce the idea that you will have, you'll be putting something in the notice of motion section, because that can be used two ways. You can either give advance notice that you're putting something in notice of motion, so it's on the agenda at publication. Or you can add something under notice of motion at the meeting, but it's for future consideration. So it all depends, I mean, if, if you feel you'd like kind of early warning in the meeting that someone will be putting in a notice of motion for a future meeting, then that might be appropriate. But if you choose to, um, agree that that's just going to be, that that category is for for information items, then maybe it's addressed later in your standing, standing business section, it's kind of, it's, it, it's entirely up to you how you define it and how you choose to use it.
I understand all of that. Um, what I didn't hear you say was where there was a substantive issue that's come up. It's emerging and urgent that either a council person or the CAO through staff, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesdays, we get the agenda, Thursday, something happens. And we need to get it onto the agenda on the following Monday. That, I, I agree with you that some of that, um, those minor issues could be handled later on. But that's the kind of thing that I, so it's emergent and it missed the deadline uh, earlier, it's something that's happened in those five days or so, that's what I would see this section for. Yeah.
And then would you see that going under new business then? Because it's something you need to address tonight.
Right, so at that point, when the emerging issue is brought up at the, um, addition portion, it gets assigned to a, a spot in the agenda, most likely new business.
Yeah.
And so it's, we'd add a, a new business item, if you had three on there, it would become item number four. And you would deal with it that way. Okay, fairly benign thing, took us four minutes. Okay, fairly benign thing took us four minutes to talk about that.
No, that's actually interesting because we've seen things like that where you have emergency response, things that come along and you never get to pick the day when the forest fires start.
That's right.
Or something like that. We have had some of that before. I was just thinking back and this is a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, so uh. So that would come in then, I think I'm I'm. I'm a believer that we should leave it there at the beginning. Yeah. Uh, but we add context. To where it is something that's. Uh, urgent and uh, missed the deadline. Okay, then adoption of the agenda, which is pretty straightforward. Uh, then adoption of the minutes. Comes after that, because they're usually right at the start. Uh, we move the comment period up. And so business arising from the minute should come right after. Uh, adoption of the minutes. It's where you deal with old items. Uh, things that are on those. Cause you only get to review those minutes once, right? Which is the next meeting hopefully, or the meeting that it's. That staff is able to actually get it on the agenda, depending on the complicated nature of it. Later on, I'll talk about whether or not there should be old business, but it's really just, is there any business arising from those minutes? So you can ask for an update from staff, staff can give an update of what happened or or uh. And then it's uh. But later on, there might be outstanding business. Actually, we have one tonight in the in the. Um, in the closed, I won't talk what it is, but but we've got one there that's. Not from the visit, from the minutes, and yet it it's something that came up that's outstanding that needs to be dealt with. So there should be a spot for that, whether we call it old business or um, or something else. Okay, so uh, business arising. Um. Proclamations and petition. And where is, am I missing something? Oh, uh, sorry, petitions and delegate, it was delegations I was thinking about. So that's proclamations with don't happen very often fairly quickly, and then we're into the meat of the meeting. Uh, which is the petitions and or delegations, if there are any. I think that first part of the meeting, you know, unless there's a a bunch of additions, which there shouldn't be, are complicated. Things, then we should be down to H fairly quickly, and that's when the delegation start. Then you've got reports, bylaws and policies. I think I agree with that. Uh, then the correspondence. Uh, information package, so correspondence and information package, I think could fit together in one. Uh, particularly if we're going to receive them. Um, in a block. In a block, the information ones at least. So for me, they could be merged together. And uh. If it's just for information. I'll read them out, we receive them as a block, if somebody wants to pull one out. It goes, we talk about it. If not, it just gets goes through as a block. All the rest of them for action, any correspondence requiring our action as a council. Gets talked about individually, received for discussion and away we go. Okay. Uh. New business is. Any new business? And then this is where I have a little note about outstanding or old business and. I see different, I've I've been involved in two other groups, Peace River Regional District and Taylor, and I've seen it both ways. The old business is is there and old business is not there, so. Um, I always thought that. Where do you bring that outstanding bit of business? That you didn't cover off. Uh, at business arising. So it might be three or four meetings old. Still not completed, still not done. But we want to talk about it. Where do you put that? Old business, I think. Some people don't like the word old. I'm I'm getting there. Outstanding business, can we call it that? Unfinished business?
Could that be included? In our standing items for discussion, because it's a standing item that's not completed, could we have that ex- um, expanded maybe?
What's the context for standing item? So it it's just those four, it's just a placeholder for those things? I'm I'm okay with that, if it's standing old business, because most of the time there'll be nothing in it. Most of the time there'll be nothing in it, but it is a place there for. Okay, I see heads shaking up and down, bobbing that that might be a spot for that. Thank you, Counselor Andrews. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Lorraine, I didn't see your hand up.
Oh, that's fine. Um, so I kind of like. I mean, I'm I'm okay with what Counselor Andrews has proposed, um, but I'm just wondering, like, I really like the idea of. Obviously, we're going to be adopting the minutes, right? And then business arising out of those minutes. Wouldn't that all of those items be tracked until such time as that business was completed?
But but when does, yes, but when does staff bring it up? To us on the agenda? If it's not finished at a business arising from the minutes portion. Right? There there will be lots of things and there are lots of things that go beyond. One meeting, you don't, you know, staff can't possibly deal with everything in that two weeks. So there will be things that go four weeks to the to the following meeting. And those those minutes are not on the agenda now. So it it, because we passed them already. So at some point, staff has to have a place on the agenda to bring that. Work or activities that have gone past that first meeting.
So one example might be um, the request that came late last year from the. What did they call themselves? The tri municipalities? From Rainbow Lake and neighboring jurisdictions. So I mean, that was how many meetings ago, and at some point they'll come back to us, I assume with some dates, so. We'll need somewhere to kind of. Put that back in front of council for consideration of the dates, whatever they propose. So that might, that would, that's where I would think would be a, it's business outstanding or outstanding business, because we haven't confirmed a date. It's from quite a few meetings beyond the last and, yeah.
And you want to get it on the agenda someplace, and so.
Yeah.
I mean, whether it stands alone or whether it's in the standing item, because it's not very often that you see something there. I'm just thinking a a place. Where staff has a place to put this stuff. Did that explanation? Uh, was that explanation okay, Counselor Goring?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm not, um, I don't have my feet stuck in the cement there on this issue at all. I just. I guess I just envisioned, and I get the point that this list could get very long. But I just guess I envisioned that business arriving seeing out of the minutes. Would be a comprehensive list until it was done, but um, so you're just going to move it from. The minutes to business um, from the outstanding from the minutes and then. It's outstanding, so it'll get moved to a standing committee or. Outstanding business or whatever you're going to call it, right? Is that it? That's the way I'm understanding what you're saying. So it's just going to get shifted to a new title. Yes?
Right, because because it's goes. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have a running list of business arising.
No, but I would sure like to.
Yeah, well, well, we do in the background.
Yes, in the background, but it's not something that's presented with the agenda. To be logged, I think, if if you started having all your activities that are still in the works in the background, waiting for further information or confirmation. Date or whatnot. So we would put it on the agenda when appropriate.
When it's time, it's just where does it go? Yeah, okay, I I think we're.
So sorry, um, so what I'm hearing you say is that. It won't be a running list, you're just looking for a place where, so it's business arising from the minutes. And then um, we address that and then it remains in the background and you're looking for a place to reintroduce it, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, new business, uh. The, and that, and we'll we'll explain that, right? In in the context of of that. Okay, so uh, new business, then the starting standing items, which would include this, whatever we're going to call it, old business and and the others things that we've got on that.
So currently our standing items for discussion are counselor reports and strategic priorities. Which you have. Any, you have just entire discretion on that. So council reports, that seems to be a good place because it's. Um, there is typically content there, the strategic priorities tends to not be addressed under there.
Right. But if there was a strategic priority that needed to be discussed, that's where it would be brought up.
Mm hmm.
Right? Because that overall, that's something that you do and we'll talk about that, I think, here pretty soon, but. Overall, you've got that strategic priority, and if there needs to be a change, there needs to be a place to discuss that and that. Or was it there because? There was an expectation that you'd talk about it every single meeting?
Yeah, not sure. It's a legacy.
Well, we can leave it there and and uh, if we don't use it, we'll pull it out, or do we want to pull it out now?
I can, I can add some uh, context there.
Please.
Uh, so if my memory serves me correctly, I believe it was. Um, previous council that wanted to. Continue the discussion on the strategic priorities. And so that was introduced, so it would take place at every meeting or as appropriate, but. I don't think it ever served that purpose.
Okay. So is there general consensus just to pull that out? Okay, let's pull that out and replace it with. Um. Outstanding business. Or words to that effect, whatever. Standing items. Uh, so after standing items, we're getting close to the end of the meeting. Now, this is where I would put notice of motion. Towards the end of the meeting, uh, it hasn't disrupted the meeting itself, but you've got one of us. Who wants to put something on to the next meeting and you want to give everybody notice that it's going to be there. Which means that there's no surprise, it gives everybody a chance to do their own research on it if they want to. Um, but at least you know it's it's coming and. And you can decide how you want to deal with it, could be refer it to the committee, any committee or or to actually deal with it at the, when the report comes. So that's where I would put notice of motion. Uh, is there? And that should take care of anything. Any fears that they might have that uh, somebody's going to drop a hand grenade on the meeting. Okay, then it's public news and media, so any of the media that's here can ask their question. At that point, including anything that come off the notice of motion. I've seen that in in other places where a person introduces the notice of motion because they know they're going to get a couple of chances to talk to the media about it. So the media would come after that. Uh, if they're if they're interested. And then a closed meeting. Then I would put rise with the report. As a section, which reminds us every single time that when we come out of. Because I'd also hope that in the closed uh, agenda. Um, there would be a a a place there that says rise with a report, where you actually decide what are you going to rise with, so you never forget. And then when you come back into the regular meeting, you rise with that. Uh, to make it public. And then adjournment.
Um, so I just have two other.
Did you say we're adjourning?
Um, one is around, so our public news, media question and answer period, currently we have, we define four kind of areas that. Will accept questions on. Um, one is regional municipality, one is budget, one is priorities set by council, and one is agenda business. So is there a desire of council to continue to limit? The questions to any categories, those categories? Or open it up?
I think that's very broad, like agenda business is basically anything a council would discuss, or are we going more specific as to things that were actually on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's intended to be this agenda or that agendas business. The regional municipality one is quite the legacy item because it was introduced to um, hopefully. Provide an opportunity for questions and answers about incorporation as as a regional municipality, which we know is. We've we've worn that path now. Um, budget makes sense, like you said, it's pretty broad, priority set by council is pretty broad. And agenda business, I mean, the very first opportunity for the public to speak is. In relation to the agenda, so that's a bit redundant, but. Um, those are just my kind of observations about the categories.
Yeah. I I've experienced. People speaking at the start of the meeting about an agenda topic. Then the the council or or the regional district has its debate. And then at the end, they might have something to say about what you've actually resolved. So I think it's important to have it in both places. Uh, even though you won't, you you get almost immediate feedback from those people who are interested, if you give them the opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Even if they've already spoken at the start of the meeting, you've made your decision as a group. Right? We've we've debated and and made our decision, but at that point. You get an opportunity to give feedback or answer any specific questions that they didn't understand about your about your debate. I think it it works well from a public. Knowledge perspective and understanding of what we've done. Uh, the other, the others, I I'd leave to the counselors who who have been here and experienced it, I think they're fairly general and and would give. Really the gallery an opportunity to really ask almost any question. Just about anything you can relate to. The budget or. You know, the agenda. With respect to the regional municipality, I suppose you could take that off of there, because if it was, it's two thousand and nine, right? But we've been this way.
Except it's kind of funny that that is the one that still requires the most explaining when you're working with public people.
All right.
Maybe just to make it more general, we could, instead of having an agenda business, we can make it just council business. So if the public wants to talk to us about council business, here's your opportunity.
Yeah. And we leave it to the chair then to to sort of decide how much of a discussion you actually have. And if it's something that's got a lot of meat to it, you assign it to a meeting somewhere. Okay, good.
Um, then the other question I just had was around um, the possibility for a category for. Um, in camera items for public information. So there are some jurisdictions that have this as a area on their agenda where it's it's kind of that light late rise and report where. Um. Potentially negotiations have concluded or. Maybe the situation has been resolved and then the um, resolution can be risen and reported kind of. Postmortem.
Right, so if if people decide to stick around after. To find out what you talked about, you may or may not rise with the report, but. But uh, that's for the folks or the general uh, release of the information generally, right?
Yeah, so it might be several meetings later even that you're releasing the information.
Right.
Um, so it would be a discussion in camera, um, and then. What what, but the practice typically is, is that there would be an internal review of resolutions that might be appropriate, and the discussion takes place among council and camera and they. Agree to rise and report them. Um, and then in the in the associated public meeting, that's where those things would appear, so.
Well, that that's the rise with the report section that I thought we should, we should add in there. That's that's what I thought that.
So it could be, okay, it could be for all items.
All items that you're that you're bringing from somewhere else there. Um. I had a comment about experience that I had with that. Went out of my head, so, all right. Uh, the last one in that section is to. Uh. That it says that once you've, once you've set your agenda order for proceedings, you must stick to it. But by resolution, we have the ability to change it, is what, let's say there's a, there's a a gallery sitting here and and they're here to listen to a particular report. We could ask that to bring to the front to give them the opportunity to hear it and leave if they, if they so choose. So even though it says that at two, it's very strict. By resolution, you can change the order of your business. Yes, staff's okay, they under, yeah, okay, good. So that brings us to twenty-two under laid items. And I expect that this will take the rest of the ten minutes that we have. Um. Uh, or not, but this is the section where. Um, we talked about a little bit already. That it doesn't get, nothing will get included on the agenda. Unless it fits the criteria of a laid item. I'm sorry, a criteria of what did we call it earlier? Uh, C A O addition, which I think we're going to write some words around. Um. Uh, being, I've got a note here that it be uh. That it was received after the deadline and it's urgent, that was my note, and I think that's what we talked about. That it was received after the deadline and it's urgent. That was my note, and I think that's what we talked about earlier. Um, and then there was a staff report on page seven. Page seven of this that talks about. The note, I guess you're, that's where you're really, we're just introducing the idea of the notice of motion, right? So. Uh, if we include a section of note, because it's not, notice of motion is not explained in the procedure by law anywhere. So this is where, you know, I think we would add that. Uh, whether it's under twenty-two under laid items or whether it's a standalone notice of motion um. Section, that's that's, this is where we would add that.
Currently, the procedure by law, it's way, way, way in section forty, talks about copies of resolutions. But that's essentially introducing a motion. So um, I would suggest that we kind of um marry those provisions and then. Adjust them just to reflect kind of discussion of where where a late item would be introduced in in the agenda. Um, and then how, if it's intended that it's a um something that requires a decision, which would be a motion. Then it's then um put into the notice of motion section in the format kind of prescribed. So it is talking about currently the suggested languages around giving um twenty-four hours notice. Um, unless unanimously unanimously agreed to waive the requirement.
Right, that would all be gone, right?
If you desire.
We decide to go with the notice of motion and the definition of laid items.
Yes, exactly.
How does everybody feel about that? Does anybody see any? Opportunity or I guess need that they would have to drop something on the council that that couldn't be dealt with in either of these two ways? No, okay, good. So we'll leave it. We'll leave it to the corporate manager to wrap some words around the notice of uh notice of motion. Good. You had a comment about delegation. And I just put a note here that you had a comment about that. Not exactly, is that the delegation policy or that it might, that's what it was, right?
Hmm.
Just because somebody asks to speak to council as a delegation. Doesn't necessarily mean that they'll automatically get put on the the discussion and the report is. It might go through staff first to vet whether it's an appropriate use of council's time and or our jurisdiction.
Yeah, so um, the delegation section, I would definitely recommend that we refer to our policy because there is a policy. Um, within the bylaw. And then the other um, the other thing that I kind of uh recognized when reviewing. Um, policies and bylaws from other communities is sometimes they have an interim kind of step of review, so. Currently, our policy and our bylaw and the practice has been that um a delegation asks to present to council and they're just put on the next agenda, so. Whether they provide something in writing or they just give a reason for their um request. There's really no analysis conducted by staff, so depending on the timing of when the request is received in the next meeting, there could be sufficient time in that. Um, time in between for staff to prepare some additional information for council or maybe even just address the issue. They may not even have to come to council if it's something that can be dealt with operationally. Um, but without those provisions in place. We don't necessarily step in to do that kind of question and answer or review of the request. It's just we receive the request and we refer it to council, so. You may want to consider um adding some additional context in the policy that allows for kind of that engagement with the delegation to see if it's. Um, if it can be referred to staff first or if it's something that does get basically referred to council directly. Um, but right now it's basically request in and then put in front of council, so.
Comments. This is one of those things where the the public, I want to see the council and. You know, they may be really adamant about it, or we might be able to say, well, you know, we, in order to give staff that opportunity. Uh, we want you to speak to staff about this and then then we'll make a determination and. How do you, how do you feel? When by telling people that there's a procedure they go through, sometimes that sets aside. Counselor Dicky.
I I'd prefer to leave it at twenty-three where the the corporate officer refers the request to the de- delegation appropriate department staff committee or council. Or a combination of all of them because I don't think. I don't believe every. Request to meet with council requires council's decision because we have so many policies that would be able to answer it. So I think a review from the department or the CAO with the recommendation. This is our policy and give it to them and then if they're not happy with that, then yes. Yeah, there should be a process, but I like that number twenty-three where the CAO decides the route.
Right, so that's that's a new policy, twenty-three point seven. Delegations will present information and address council consistent with the petitions and delegation policy as amended from time to time. So we would add that in. That's what I'm hearing you in the, okay. Okay, good. We have three minutes, maybe we can get something else. Uh, voting. I think you had something on voting under K.
Uh. Yeah, um, so the voting um provisions, I I just flagged them kind of for councils' information. And awareness, um, just in that um kind of past and more recent practice. May not be consistent or isn't likely consistent with um the process of voting as defined by the procedure by law. But that's not to say it needs to change. It's just raising it to here's a dis, here's a discrepancy and whether. Practice um aligns with the bylaw or the bylaw aligns with practice, whichever you want to skin that cat, so.
So you're just asking us to do what the bylaw says and that's. Yeah, so, so if we call a question, that's, the debate is ended. You don't get another kick at it, it's. You get your chance according to this and then uh either the presiding person calls the question, all in favor or not. Or somebody requests that the presiding member call that question. At that point, there's no more discussion. Sometimes what'll happen is someone will cause, call the question and then go on to a whole bunch more debate after that. But this is pretty clear that once that happens, it's it's done. Okay. That's the way we'll proceed going forward then. With as much flexibility as our time will allow. All right. That's uh five fifty-nine, that's maybe a, you know, the time we should, I think it's dinner, dinner here. Is it here? Yeah. So uh, let's stop there. If there's some time left after, can we come, so we'll uh. Well, well, yeah, so we'll, we want to adjourn this meeting, we'll just recess this meeting. And if there's time after the council meeting and we're all comfortable moving forward, we can come back to this. Are you okay with that? Okay, good, that's what we'll do. Trying to get the committee, the whole meeting back to order, please. If we can, uh, if we're all consenting to go till nine o'clock, I don't think it will be enough to allow us to finish the procedure by law. Uh, I do have a couple of suggestions. The next section is a section that I that I think will be uh the most. Um, discussion items for me, just about everything after that was administrative in in nature, so. I I don't know if we want to plan another meeting on another day uh to go through all of those. Or if uh council will um allow me to work with staff to pull together what that bylaw might look like and we'll present the draft by law to you. Uh, and then we we can uh, we can, all we have to do then is. Uh, make the changes that you're interested in, so we we can do this offline. Um. From my perspective, just about everything after what we're going to discuss now is administrative. Uh, let's uh, let's go to section twenty, I just have to remember where I was. I did mark it. Under section twenty-four is voting, twenty-five is points of order. Twenty-six is conduct and debate. So if everybody can go to page uh thirteen of the draft by law. Yeah, some of it is on there. So we're just getting a a report for Counselor Emax uh that that she can follow along with. Um. The conduct and the debate section is the section that really talks about how how we will deal with the timing. How often you can speak to a particular agenda item. Um. And and for me, it goes all the way. I'm okay with what's written here till we get to twenty-six. Um. Twenty-six. Ten. I don't know if there's anybody who has anything prior to twenty-six, ten on the bylaw. Okay, seeing none. Twenty-six, ten says, the following rules apply to limit speech on matters being considered at a council meeting. A member may speak more than once in connection with the same question, only with permission of council. Or if the member is explaining a material part of a previous speech without introducing a new matter. And then over the next page. That's ten A, one and two, over the next page at ten D. A member may speak to a question or may reply or may speak in reply. For longer than the total of three minutes, only with the permission of council. Well, my view, that's saying at a regular council meeting, each of you has. One opportunity to 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 speak your mind with respect to any particular item on the agenda or question on the agenda. And a maximum of three minutes to do that in. Which is limiting your ability to 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 speak to some degree. There's, there's positives and negatives to this, or maybe I should say a flip side to this. Uh. The negative side is. It's it's a restriction on on uh. On discussion. Uh, and and speaking. On the other side, from a chair's perspective. It's the ability to keep a meeting on track and keep a meeting from getting out of hand. Um, while we're all friends. The way we're working here works well, and you you don't even, if you're all friends. Uh, and things are going smoothly at a, on a council, there's really no need for these procedure by law expectations. But if a council starts to go sideways with respect to relationships and the abilities for uh people to be respectful. The chair needs a. Needs some rules to keep a a modicum of respect and um control of the meeting. So there's the pros and cons of that, and I'm interested in what you all have to say with respect to those restrictions. And us starting to enforce them. Counselor source.
Uh, just, I I think under normal circumstances, there's. I can think of very few times where it could have come in handy, but I can see the benefit of having that. How would you manage that as the chair? Would you have a stopwatch? I mean, a stopwatch set up so when Danny starts to speak, you have a stopwatch or how how would you manage something like?
Yeah, if it came to that, that's what I would have.
Okay.
That's that's what I would click my watch and and uh. And and when you were finished, I'd write down how much time you had, if it came to that, but otherwise, if it if. That, if it came to that, it means that we're in a whole lot of worse shape than than just a discussion, right? Uh, otherwise, I think it's the chair or the 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 um. The presiding persons feel for being fair, right? And if somebody felt like they weren't given enough time. Uh. Their three minutes, they would say something, and then it would be the chair's responsibility to say, yeah, I think you're right, you didn't quite get it. That's how it would work, sort of if if you were having to do it uh normally. If we, if we're able to get our business done fairly quickly and and things are moving along, then and 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 we're not. We're not in a position with respect to how the meetings are going, that they're disrespectful or they're taking till ten o'clock because we're just debating and debating and debating.
Because we like.
Yeah, we're going round and round and round, then. Then then I I think the way we've been doing is is not, is is not to that. So the idea is to prevent this from from spiraling down into a. Into a very difficult uh council meeting. Uh, actually, I think I saw Counselor Gerling's hand up first before, and then and then you, Counselor Dicky. Counselor Gerling, please.
Um, yeah, so I would hate for us to um. Put this into action, like totally, totally dislike it. Vinimently, like, I just can't say enough about how against I would be about this. I could go on for three minutes if you like, but I could stop. My other concern is, like you said at the beginning, there's no need for these types of controls. As we're all getting along. But if we're not, not that I've ever experienced where something like this had to be put into place, so I can't imagine a time. Uh, especially with this council, but my concern is. You can't have something on the books and then don't use it. And then all of a sudden start using it, you know what I mean? It's like you've set this precedent that this is the procedure. Yeah, no, we were all friends before and we haven't been using it, but now. Now we're not, or now there's like a thorn in our rose bush or whatever, so now we're going to institute it. That's. A big concern for me. Um, I I don't know a way around it. I mean, something. About, I think I read in there where it said that debate can continue until such time as it's repetitive. And then the chair can call the debate ended. Um, something like that I think would be. Easier to manage and less stifling.
Thank you. Um, before I respond to that, I'll I'll ask Counselor Dicky to.
I I I think there, when we're all getting along, we don't need it, but I think when, if there is a a time where uh. Repetitive this uh happens, I think it has to stop because we only have a certain amount of time. But I also wonder, this is probably a question for um staff, is. We get the information packages so early and we have lots of time to review it, and if there's something in there that is just really, we're really stumped with. Can we reach out to staff and say, hey, can you explain this to me? I don't quite understand this. So doing your research before you come to the meeting so that you can ask the question and it may be answered by staff, and then you don't need to debate it here.
Yeah.
I would just add that um. If if the question, if the question reveals something that might be missing from the report, then we would send out a distribution to all of council so that. Um, the question, so that the that everyone has access to the information, but if it's just a clarification of the information that's already within the report. We can absolutely do that one-on-one.
Yeah, so and and thanks for that because it does speak to being prepared in in advance and to speak to Counselor Gerling's point about. Uh, you know, I s. There's a couple of different ways to look at this. One is that sort of. Uh, what did you call it? A thorn, the thorn in the rose sort of concept. Where, you know, you've you've got a counselor that's going rogue, right? Or the mayor, or the mayor for that matter, right? That's that's sort of going off, you know, and it's being really disrespectful because something happened and now they got to be in their bonnet. And they're just being really difficult. The other is it's a complicated issue. Right? We haven't dealt with it at Committee the Whole, and that's sort of why. At the same time as this is going on, this whole review of. It's also introducing the idea that we use the committee of the whole more frequently. Because in them, if something were to come up that we hadn't spoke about it, maybe the whole, but yet we start seeing. Seven three-minute speeches that are fairly meaty about a particular topic, that's a perfect time to move it to a committee of the whole. Right? And if it, if it's time sensitive. There's not, there's nothing stopping you from going into a committee of the whole meeting right then and there. Like, you don't have to wait till the following Monday or whatever to do a committee of the whole. You can go, it hasn't happened very often. Uh, a couple of times at the regional district that I can remember, but you can go. A couple of times at the regional district that I can remember, but you can go directly into a into a Committee of the Whole meeting, right in the middle. It's like you can go in camera, right in the middle of your council meeting. There's no agenda, but everybody sort of knows what everything is about because you've just been talking about it for 21 minutes. So you can go in camera, and that's where, that's where I think it works as much as anything, is that they seem fairly restrictive. But again, if we've got a lot of discussion, we just move it straight in camera. If there's, or it's not in camera, sorry, to Committee of the Whole. If if it's timely, you do it right then and there. And if you have some time, then you put it at a date that everybody can come back and have a discussion about that one particular topic, because it's obviously important to everybody with seven, three-minute discussions about it. So that's available to us, Counselor Gerling, in the event that, you know, that the discussion. Otherwise, I think I agree that the chair, whether it's written here or not, would talk about, or would be listening to the conversation and waiting to see if it's repetitive. And if it starts to get repetitive, I think as a chairperson, you would ask those who hadn't spoke yet if they had something different, something different to say. And if they didn't, you would call the question. So there's there's ways around the concern that you have, I guess, based on just good on good governance around the meetings themselves.
Could I have a follow-up?
Sorry?
Could I have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, so just to your point about perhaps moving to a Committee of the Whole, there's language that dictates how council people can communicate in Committee of the Whole, too. It's right, so I don't know that one solves the other issues, but again, I'm willing to defer to those that have been practicing this mode where I have not, and and see how it goes. Like, I just don't want, you know, "Oh, well, you've spoken two times now, so you can't speak again on it, but like, you know, you have something else to add, or somebody else's thought has made you think of something, but I've already spoken two times and I've used up my three minutes, and I just don't want to see us get into that if we don't have to."
Okay. So yes, there are procedural requirements with respect to the Committee of the Whole, but they're significantly less. You go multiple times, you can speak on one topic. This currently limits us to 10 minutes, so you can imagine 10 minutes each, or seven of us, that's a 70-minute discussion about a particular thing. You know, that's getting repetitive there somewhere, I think. So, so thank you for deferring to the to the experience. I think it works well, and I think if we can just get past this this bylaw, as we implement it, we'll just see how it goes. And always here's, you know, if the reverse has always been my experience with respect to counselors coming to me. "Rob, you're giving us way too much time." And, you know, but I'm also recognizing the other side is that you've got to agree to the procedures that you're going to follow. Until you agree, you're going to change them. So we'll see how, we'll see how it works once we get through it. Counselor Sauce?
Just a question then regarding that, as a chair, you already have the power to shut meeting down, do you not? Is that not, if I'm thinking that to shut someone down, if they become really repetitive or go on and on and on? You already have under your role, or is that only through the procedures?
That's this.
That's only through this that you have, okay?
That's this.
Perfect sense. Yeah, then it makes sense.
Okay. So, having said all of that, it was a very good discussion. Thank you very much. I would leave this section the same. Ms. MacGyver, do you agree?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, it's highlighted there because it hasn't been followed to the letter, but as Counselor Gerling noted, I don't know that we've had the occasion to have to either. But I think if it's all regarded and understood, and even in the regular meeting conduct and debate, it does give council members, I think, sufficient time to address their colleagues. With, of course, the last, with the last opportunity to speak is got a time limitation, but yeah. I was going to note, too, so in the motions generally, if council's considering a question, at any point, they can, a member may make a motion to refer to a committee, which would be Committee of the Whole. So regardless of where you are in the decision-making process, if there's a if someone feels that it's going too long, you can immediately refer to the Committee of the Whole, and it has to be decided at that time. It's not debatable, it's not amenable. It's, you put the question and then council can opt to go to Committee of the Whole right then and there, and then relax procedure to have the wholesome discussion that you're looking for, and you might not be getting out of the ring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is everybody okay with that? Understand that? Yeah, so that's Section 27, which is the very next section. So thank you for bringing that up. And we already talked about, this is sort of right around this area is where we would add the notice of motion request. Yes? Okay. I just wanted to point out at 27.5, this is for information, and it would have helped us with the situation that we had in the last meeting, Counselor Gerling, you'd appreciate this. 27.5 says, "Council must vote separately on each distinct part of a question that is under consideration by the council meeting." So essentially, you can't merge them together and do it a block of the specific points within. So we had a circumstance, for those of you who weren't here, where I asked, "Why, can we just bring all these together?" Counselor Gerling was opposed to that. And if I'd remembered that I read this, I wouldn't even have said it, but it it's a point where I missed it myself, and we dealt with it at the last closed meeting that day. All right, I.
And if I may add, then I certainly didn't know, but I will make vote of this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to take some courses.
Yeah, the, yeah, the specifics, the specifics of it aren't necessary, but yeah, it could have went either way, I suppose, but the appropriate way, according to my bylaws, that each of those points should have been voted on separately.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up that example. I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yeah. It jumped right out at me. The next one is, I'm all the way on page 21 of the bylaw, which is Section 40, which we've talked about a lot, which is the one that requires, if you, the council, are going to bring up a particular, any motion that's not on the agenda, it's got to be in place 24 hours in advance. We've had a bunch of discussion around that already, around around, it should be timely, and it should be for additions to the agenda, also for notice of motions to ensure that there's no surprises. So I think that that Ms. MacGyver says that we should just delete this altogether, this whole section, essentially. Okay, and I just wanted to get to the Committee of the Whole rules. There's just a couple there that I think that might have some discussion. The point that Counselor Gerling brought up once before it was a question, I think, is answered at 42.2, where it basically says, "In addition to going into a Committee of the Whole meeting, other than standing or select, to which all members of council are invited to consider but not decide on matters of regional municipalities' business at a meeting of the Committee of the Whole." So essentially, it's, right, it's saying that we can consider but not decide. So that's where I, you know, the whole idea, it's not a decision-making meeting. It's a meeting where the standards are relaxed, and you get a greater opportunity to have input, still televised, still, still streamed to the public. It's just that it relaxes the standard at that, at that time, and you can talk a lot. So I think, Counselor Gerling, you had a question. I don't know if it was, I don't think it was a concern. I think it was a question of clarification is what it was about, what's the intent of this Committee of the Whole meeting anyways, if it's not a decision-making body? So that speaks to that question, I think. So I was just looking if you had any feedback with respect to that, or whether you're understanding the Committee of the Whole process.
Again, I think I'm going to defer to those that have have experience in this and reserve my judgment. I want to go into it with an open mind and, yeah, make it work. It's whatever the process is. I think once I learn it and can participate to the best of my abilities, I will do that. I think the only concern that I had right from the beginning is when somebody contacted me and just, I think everybody will remember, I brought it up before, where they didn't want to have to attend two meetings, like if the discussion mainly takes place at the Committee of the Whole, and then the decision is made at the regular council meeting, they kind of miss that discussion piece. And then, but then I think I heard something afterwards that when you go back or go into the regular agenda items into the regular meeting, you have that discussion anyways. So I'm just not clear on, would we do it twice, or, you know, once you have your discussion in Committee of the Whole, and then you go into the regular meeting to actually have your vote, make your decision, do we then discuss it again? Or, like, I don't want to waste time either.
Yeah, you get it, you get that second opportunity. You know, so if you argue to get something at the Committee of the Whole, then there's always the opportunity when you get back, because sometimes the Committee of the Whole is not, most of the time, it's not even at the same meeting. So you go away and you come back, and you might have had some things that you thought of, or you might have done more research based on what you heard at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and so you'll come back with some ideas. Yeah, I get your point. If it's in the same meeting and you come out of the, you know, committee, you have a regular meeting, go into the Committee of the Whole, talk it over, come out of the Committee of the Whole, why would you do it again? Except for the fact the procedure says that the thing, the question will be moved and seconded, there will be debate, and then the question will be called. If you've just had a fulsome discussion, there's not going to be much debate at that, at that time. You know, unless somebody is just absolutely against whatever it is, the resolution, they get another kick at it. They get three minutes at that point, and and away we go.
Okay, can I, can I just have a follow-up?
Sure.
So then, how will the minutes look? So there's obviously minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting, and there is minutes of the regular meeting. In the minutes of the regular meeting, will there be a link to the Committee of the Whole discussion meeting on that topic? I see Jaylene going, "Yep."
Yep. Yeah, it's our intent to provide as much continuity as possible, so what I understand is that in other communities, when a, when a report with a recommendation of Committee of the Whole comes to a council agenda for decision, it's basically, the recommendation fronts that Committee of the Whole report, and it's placed on the agenda. And then in that item, we would put a link to the Committee of the Whole recording, so that basically, if you're just stepping into that regular agenda, you have all of the information, all the background information dating back to the original information in Committee of the Whole, basically, to kind of fill in the blanks for you.
Great, thank you.
Um. Uh, 45, we're speeding through this pretty good. Actually, I thought there would be a little bit more discussion, but we're speeding through this pretty good. So 45, on Part 7, talks about any council member can decide over the Committee of the Whole meeting. I'm used to it, but then you have to go through a process of deciding it, who will be that person. I would just assume it'd say that the mayor, normally the mayor or acting mayor will chair the Committee of the Whole meeting. And if we just put that there, it saves us from going through a voting and a procedure every time we want to have a Committee of the Whole to decide who's going to chair the meeting. I mean, it's great to shuffle that around once in a while, because everybody gets a chance to do it, and everybody learns. And I'm absolutely okay with that. But not, if we say normally, right? The mayor always has an opportunity to step back and let the acting mayor take a turn. Generally, okay with that? That change?
Okay, good.
So that brings me to 47, which is conduct and debate. The following rules apply to the Committee of the Whole meetings, and there were four there that were there before. A motion is not required to be seconded. A motion for adjournment is not allowed. A member may speak any number of times to the same question, and you must not speak more than 10 minutes on any one question. So that would give us, if we all had a 10-minute, 70-minute discussion. I don't expect it to go there, but that's what the rules are. And I'm completely okay with those, but I just wanted to drop that out to see if anybody else has any. Because that's the meat, that's the meat of it, right? That's the reason that you, you go, that's why you're, one of the reasons you're calling. And the other is, is that staff gets a much greater opportunity to participate themselves. Go ahead, Counselor Andrews.
Just some context on the motion for adjournment is not allowed. I'm just curious as to why those words were used, is not allowed.
Because a motion to adjourn has to be, has to be dealt with by the chair. And so if you, if one of you puts a motion to adjourn, that's a way to get out of the meeting, and the chair has to deal with it. So essentially, the whole idea behind the Committee of the Whole is for a fulsome discussion, to have the whole fulsome discussion, and then the mayor adjourn that Committee of the Whole meeting at the, at the end of the discussion, rather than somebody forcing it to the vote in the middle of the, in the middle of the discussion. That's my belief of why it's there. Do anybody, is there anybody in staff that might think differently?
No, that's exactly, it takes precedent.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I could have just said that, it takes precedent.
Sorry.
Your explanation was best, thank you.
I just had a question around whether or not a motion should be seconded before it is debated. It would seem to be more consistent with our typical procedure if it were seconded and then debated, but currently, it says it's not required. So I'm just not sure exactly what the, why.
It opens up.
Even further.
It opens up all discussion items. Normally, you've got an agenda that says what's supposed to be there, and it's moved and seconded, but within the meeting itself, you could have some, you could have some motions that get brought up, and it's more like a brainstorming session where you accept every point, and then sort of weed out which ones you're going to talk, in my view, weed out which ones you're going to talk about, which ones. If it has to be seconded, somebody's voice might be muted because they're, they're, they may be an outlier, but sometimes that's the point of view we're all looking for. You know, and so it might seem strange at the start, but then eventually the person's able to convince everybody. If nobody's willing to second it, we can't even discuss it. This allows that to happen. Does that, does that make sense? Counselor Andrews? Okay. Well, it wasn't you that asked the question, it was you.
It still made sense to me.
Okay, thanks. 49 is technical, it's really just 49.1 is redundant, really, to the requirement, and the rest of it should be moved. This is how you come out with a rise with a report, should all get moved into another section. It's really an administrative section. Should be added to the appropriate, oh, so the 49.3 says that the Committee of the Whole reports will be presented by the corporate manager or CAO. It's really, that's not necessary. It's just added to the next, to the appropriate agenda as far, as an agenda item. Okay? That is Committee of the Whole. Oh, standing, staff had a request for now, there's standing committees and there are select committees. The report talks about, this is the staff report now, talks about, these committees should just reflect similarly the procedure of the Committee of the Whole meeting. Discussion about that.
Makes sense for continuity.
Yeah, it does make sense. Um, I guess the only thing I would say is, is right now, I think the two committees that we have that are standing, uh, Counselor Gerwing chairs both of those. So are, would you be comfortable using the document, I guess, after to chair those meetings if they, if, if you use the committee, the whole format?
If I would be comfortable to what?
To use the committee, the whole format for your standing committees, because I think you're the only one right now with, with standing committees here. You've got the environment one and you've got the one for health. Right? You chair those, those. And so this is saying, uh, if we accept that, that those, that all meetings will just follow the committee, the whole format is essentially what staff would like to put into this section.
Um, I'm not sure what health one you're speaking about, but the E A C or the environmental advisory committee, we have our own terms of reference um, that dictates how we do business. So are you saying that, oh, sorry. Are you, sorry, are you saying that we would have to change the way we conduct, um, our meetings for the E A C?
Uh, if we adopted it here, you would. But the other thing we can adopt is just adopt the, that, that the committees will have their own terms of reference or follow the committee, the whole. That's, that's all. And you could keep it exactly the same.
Because, I mean, the tourism advisory committee would fall under that as well then, wouldn't it?
I, I think I was thinking about the healthcare steering committee, maybe. Is that the committee I'm thinking of?
H B, the Community Health Plan Committee?
Yeah.
Counselor Gerwing doesn't, uh.
Oh, you don't care that? Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. So it would be, yeah, so the other two then that, that you're talking about, the environmental.
Tourism, I mean, if you're thinking this would impact the E A C, then it would definitely impact the, um, tourism advisory committee as well.
Yeah. So does it have a, uh, terms of reference? That talks about how you'll run your meetings?
I'm pretty sure it does. Yeah, I'm sure, right? Yeah.
So then that's, that's current practice? This, this bylaw can reflect current practice?
Okay.
Right? So we can, like, it, it can, um, it can follow a predetermined terms of reference or follow the committee, the whole, and that way we've got both sides covered.
Yeah, and council did approve the terms of reference for both of those committees. Yeah.
Yeah, that's just reflecting current practice in the bylaw. Okay, good.
I just have one other question in terms of, um, the order of business of proceedings for committee of the whole. And while we're at it, even though it's not on the agenda, the regional hospital district, um, because the order of proceedings could be quite a bit more simplified for committee of the whole than they are for the regular council meeting. So currently, and that's our agenda order, the order of business. Um, we're probably not going to read proclamations in a committee of the whole. So would counsel feel comfortable with me kind of paring it down to be relevant to what you would see in a committee of the whole and proposing that in the next draft?
I would be.
Okay.
You know.
Okay.
Yeah. Down to the particular things that you would, so it would be reports, correspondence perhaps, delegations, that, that, yeah.
And would counsel be in favor of keeping the public comment period the same as they do for regular in the committee of the whole meetings and the regional hospital district meetings?
Say that again, please.
Would you, would you want to keep the public comment periods in those meetings?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Because there's only one thing that we're talking about, right? Generally, one or two agenda topics.
Yes, yeah, okay.
The public meetings, we said, are open to the public. And so if the public are there, I'm a believer that you give them an opportunity to, uh, to speak. Okay, so that's everything I had. Does anybody else, was there anything that I missed that you might need to bring up? Would like to bring up?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm mindful of the time, but for the R H D procedure bylaw that we were looking at at noon, um, would it be, would it stand to reason that the regular meeting conduct, um, and debate provisions be included or the committee, the whole conduct and debate provisions?
Regular, I think.
Regular, okay.
Because it's a, it's a complete standing.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Board of its own.
Um, and I think that that was.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please do.
Sorry, I missed the noon meeting, but Central Mountaineer is not my friend today. So, so what did you just say, Jaylene? Then the rules of conduct are going to be the rules that we put forward as a regular council meeting. So if we need to operate outside of that, then there's no committee of a whole to adjourn to. So then what happens?
Are you talking for?
Yeah, no, I'm hearing you. I'm stumped. You stumped me.
I thought maybe I wasn't making sense or my question didn't.
No, 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 yeah, I, I'm, I'm stumped with the response to that. I'm sorry. I've never seen a committee, the whole in a hospital board meeting. Um, normally because the hospital board, I, well, I guess maybe this is the way to say that is the hospital board meeting for the most part is only one or two topics. It's, you know, the agenda becomes sort of pretty light with respect to the number of topics on there. It's they're heavy topics because you're talking about budget and you're talking about health and, and projects, uh, potentially. But I've never seen one that, uh, evolved to the point that there needed to be, uh, we went into another meeting, an hour was usually always good. So I'm stumped on your, you know, would you include the committee, the whole stuff there? I'm stumped.
So I guess I, I, I think if I'm understanding it correctly and I, I am cognizant of the time too, so I can ask these questions at another time, but, uh, and I do apologize again for missing the noon meeting. But if let's just say I wanted to speak more than two times about a, a certain agenda item, then if I'm understanding it correctly, I could do so with permission from council or the board.
That's right. Nobody could stop you. Nobody could stop, well, it would force it to a vote, basically. If the chair didn't want to give you the time, you could request a vote of council to give you more time.
Okay.
Always. That's always the case, yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, so I think the next, the next steps is, is for the corporate manager to go away and pull our comments together. And I saw, I saw all of them seriously writing, I think. So there's, uh, probably a good record of what we said and I thank you for that. There were a couple of other things on the, uh, maybe the whole meeting on a new business, mostly about dates, availability for dates. So six point one, and I think we can get this done in fifty minutes, six point one talks about, uh, dates available for strategic planning. So strategic planning is really the first order of business for us was this. Right? Understanding how we're going to operate. The next one really is is strategic planning. And understanding where we want to go as, as a team, as a body that gives ultimate direction to our staff uh, with respect to how they're supposed to operate and make decisions within our direction. And so strategic planning is important. Uh, and, and staff have asked me to have a discussion with council about when we might be able to do that and what the process might look like. So I am going to turn it over quickly to C A O Barry to talk about what he's done so far with because it, the strategic plan could end up being exactly the same. We agree with the last council or we might have our own twists to add on it, but.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be as quick as I can. So what I've done is hit roadblocks in terms of availability of a facilitator and a lot has to do with, well, just that availability and the challenges of getting to the community with, uh, the flight schedule and having that availability match. The council is stuck.
We have firsthand knowledge today about that.
So, so we did have, so Christine Benty, who some of you might have met prior, um, is prepared to go through strategic, strategic planning process with council. We had her booked for next week, but that was a year ago, um, when I had that lined up to make sure that we were prepped and ready to go into ground running a new year and well and behold, missed the whole B C, uh, resource forum piece that, uh, threw a wrench in that. So we've been bouncing back and forth with dates to try to fit her in. She's highly sought after and again, to come to, to the community, it's, it's challenging. So there's some, there's some virtual options she can provide. Uh, one date is September, or sorry, not September. Uh, January twenty-eighth, which is a Saturday, um, which we're, we would look at probably, you know, three to four hours on that, minimally two, but three to four hours on a Saturday to, to start flushing out some information from council. Um, prior to that, she would provide a survey and information for council to fill out around, you know, what are your priorities? Why did you run for office? Uh, and, and um, that would go directly to her so she can start collecting that information, doing a follow-up with council in the meantime, or those counselors. Um, but we also intend to this Friday, the thirteenth, uh, at noon to do a very high level overview of the existing, especially for those, for, well, for those of you who, uh, weren't on council previously or are exposed to strategic plan, we're going to do a high level overview of the strategic, uh, of the previous strategic plan too. So you can, and answer any questions you may have. It's a quick presentation. Uh, hoping that, uh, returning counselors can chime in and discuss, um, and, and, and make comment on that. Because as the mayor said, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident there are actually things on the existing strategic planner, previous council strategic plan, i.e. economic diversification, uh, health, uh, and whatnot that are going to remain on a, as, as a priority of council. So, um, the hope is to be able to bring someone in here and do a session in chambers, face to face. Uh, can still do that, just the timing wise, we're talking, uh, later this spring or early, early spring. Um, so there's different options from a virtual piece, but, um, I think it's, it's worthwhile to do a virtual anyway, to have that conversation to start with Christina, uh, as from, from especially given the challenges of getting someone to get here, here for the reasonable amount of time. Um, and the earliest you can do, like I said, is, is the twenty-eighth of January, which is a Saturday. Uh, and, and nine o'clock, like a nine, nine AM start, maybe nine till noon or whatever to, to flush out and, and get, get council's thoughts and do that virtually. And there's also, um, there's technology there. We'd have you with your devices in front of you. So if there was any sessions where you'd have to do whiteboard sessions or Johnny, we, we, we do what we can to kind of ease the pain of the virtual piece, um, even to a point of the little camera looking in the bowling alley for, for her perspective. So, um, I think from a, from a, from a budget perspective, it's important to council minimally to have discussions around your priorities and where your thoughts are and to get some alignment potentially. Um, from, from a capital perspective, it's not necessarily super important from a capital project because that's uh, part of our asset management plan, which we intend to have a conversation, do a presentation to council on. But when you look at what kind of initiative and priorities you want to proceed within the term and what you want to accomplish, um, that's really important. You look at things like, you know, social economic studies and Paraboon and things and, and, and the initiatives that especially kind of the planning department. So, yeah, so I'll let you, uh, give your thoughts, Mayor.
Yeah, so I, I absolutely agree with that and, you know, and I, I I'm a believer in the, in the face to face. Uh, but I also know the importance of a strategic plan or at least staff understanding council's perspective on what its vision is. Uh, and I think we can probably do that with a couple of sessions. So the one that you, that you're putting forward here on, on Friday, that sort of get what's in place now. And then a little bit of a, of a, a work with, of it, uh, online with, uh, with Christine. That should flush out enough that you will at least understand our vision and priorities at a preliminary stage prior to the budget. And that's what I wanted to say with, with to everybody else is staff has, is pulling together a budget right now and have no idea what our dreams are, right? I mean, they're, so it's basically a status quo budget, which might be fantastic, but it might not be, right? Uh, so we, we need to at least do some of that preliminary stuff and if we're real good, which I think we are, we might not need the face to face because we get it flushed out, but, but it's available to us. Counselor Gerwing, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm, will be really sad to miss the meeting on Friday, but I'm very hopeful I will miss the meeting on Friday because that means I'll be on my way home. I even tried to book the bus today. When I get back, I'll tell you my story about the bus, but anyways, um, yeah, so I just wanted to make that point. I'm assuming that Friday's meeting will be recorded and so that I can review it and add any comments that I might have at a later date. So I appreciate that. And then the only other, um, point that I wanted to make is I think virtual is fine. And I think I heard Mr. Barry say that, um, she will be interviewing or, um, talking with each of the council members. I think she did that for the chamber and I think it was very productive. Um, garnered out or teased out a lot of information. Um, and then just, would she be also involved in setting up the action plan or will that be processing later on? Like, I don't mean these first sessions, but eventually the plan will be, or action items will be associated with the plan and will she be drafting that or how do we think that will work?
Please, we can, we can counsel, we can use her for whatever, um, council wishes to use her for. I think it's important that, especially from a capacity perspective and a knowledge and experience perspective, that we use her to, um, to, to provide whatever she can to assist, uh, council and staff in navigating through the process and also executing the process. So providing tools to execute it. Um, I think, uh, if council is in favor, do we continue on? So it doesn't mean that as of Saturday to twenty-eighth, it's one and done. It's, it's, it's there's opportunities to continue on with that relationship as we navigate through it. And council may wish to have her come up and kind of seal it all up and put in the fancy package and put a bow on it and have a discussion. It's just, well, we can cross that bridge for sure, but, uh, whatever council wishes.
Okay, good.
Okay, and just to follow up, if I may?
Please do.
If anybody knows. I know, if anybody knows of anybody that's leaving Prince George for Fort Elson, please contact.
Okay. You're so desperate, I feel like driving down and getting you myself. All right, uh, can we talk about preliminary budget meetings? Um, again, it's, uh, it probably is our most significant policy that, that we deal with. All of them are, are important. But it's probably the biggest one when it comes to taxation. And we need to get it moving. And so staff has recommended, uh, February twenty-first to twenty-fourth. Um, remember there are multiple opportunities to participate in the budget process. This is just a preliminary. Um, but there's telling us that there's at least three or four days needed to go through the preliminary budget with staff. Uh, and I think the expectation is those are full day meetings.
Not, not necessarily. No, we're looking at so anywhere from, so noon and or evenings, um, is the intent. We think we'll probably need, we're thinking seventy-eight hours to get through it. But again, it depends on how much progress you make throughout that week. So, so we're really hoping that that week, the twenty-first to twenty-fourth, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you can really take a look at your calendars and provide, you know, if there's any, uh, we, we obviously uh, understand work schedules and whatnot and try to work around that. At the same time, if there's an absolute no-go, um, let us know so we can try to navigate around it. But we're hoping that we can in that timeframe, get through the, uh, the, the initial stage of, of the preliminary budget, um, at least have those discussions with council um, and answer any questions that you may well, answer questions that you will have, I'm sure, that may have. We're going to, and, and, and there'll be a number of, um, speak fast here. So there'll be that's the preliminary budget figure, some items that we actually have to cross prior to them, but I'll, we'll, we'll send it up separately. We're drafting the process and process of drafting the email to send to council, to get an idea of what to expect in terms of due process and what we want to accomplish prior to prelim budget. One of which is going to be, of course, we have the strategic planning piece. We've got the review of the strategic plan on Friday. Those are my notes. Um, we also have a review of the asset management program, the I D C A V. You have to understand how the whole capital piece ties in with our agreement with the province and, and some of the necessities in terms of what our capital plan needs to look like based on that agreement. Um, and then additionally, we want to review the, uh, personnel information too. There's some film in terms of the C B A, the collective agreements and the impacts of the budget and what they are and some of the previous, uh, because probably see existing or returning counselors have been. um, because probably see existing or returning counselors have been privy to some of the discussions, but obviously you guys, new counselors, have not. Uh, yourself, Mayor. So there's some items there that we're gonna, we're gonna throw to as part of a scheduling piece, so you'll see that, so stay tuned. Any questions or?
Those are not necessarily meetings. Those are like lunch and learn.
They're lunch and learn. They're, they're, so when I say meeting, I'm inter, meeting, but it's committee of the whole meeting to kind of do a, here's, so here's some information. And uh, lunch and learn, I like that. Um, but the twenty first to the twenty fourth is important for the preliminary budget review. Try to get that locked in so that we can uh, uh, get that piece. This is, as part of that process between the preliminary budget review and then the uh, community engagement piece uh and feedback for the community. And then, of course, we go back and, we go back and bring that back to council afterwards and provide the feedback and do a final review. Um, to, for budgets liberation with council. We're also going to do a, a lunch and learn, um, specific to what that, the budget process looks like. So that uh, for those who are new to it, you can, we can walk you through a, a bit of a presentation in terms of what to expect as part of the budget process and answer any questions you'll have also. So lots of, just keep an eye on your emails. There's going to be some information out, and then just feel free to give me a call if you have any questions, any clarification or want to discuss anything whatsoever.
So will you send a me, email out asking for um exceptions to our time from the twenty first to the twenty fourth? And you're talking two hours a day, eight hours potentially?
We're talking or hoping evenings, maybe like five to seven, is what we've typically done in the past, and we've done nines, right? So it'd be nice if we can do a bit of a, how we've done it in the past is we block the time as placeholder, we start at noon. And then we go back at five that day.
Okay.
And then we, 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 so basically, we just reconvene at five, and then we, we go as fast or as slow as council wants to go or need to go. And that's kind of dictates what that rest of that week looks like also in terms of scheduling, but if we can block those times, it'd be great. Come back at five. Yeah. That's what we've done. If council is open, and again, it's just more or less understanding that you have the jobs and other, other commitments and whatnot, right? Because it would be great if we're going to start and go and just run it, but.
Okay.
I don't think we've ever used up all the time.
Good.
Can we use the mic so I can hear?
I don't recall using up all the time. We have blocked out either.
Sorry, Lorraine.
Thanks. Um, and it has to be that week, right? The twenty first to the twenty fourth. Couldn't it be the week before? Just got a few problems with that week, but I sent them to you, so.
Okay. Yes, kinda. It's based on other the, flowing through, um, but I'll chat with you.
Yeah.
There's, there are lots, yeah, there are lots of opportunities if we're not able to actually meet. I think it, we need to we need to pick some time, and that's the time that staff work backwards to there and time forward to, to figure, and that's where it landed. So I think it's important that we uh, we, we, again, it's the most important thing, I think. Policy wise that we uh, we deal with, and so we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out that week. And Lorraine, if you can't make it, then uh, if you're hung up somewhere, then I'm sure staff will work with you individually. Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, just, so just back to the strategic plan is firm. So the twenty eighth, I haven't heard anything or any issues for that day. Um, if, if there is, please let me know, but we're gonna, I'll send some information out again for the end of the week specifically. Confirming, we'll get a meeting request, and I'll start getting that Christina to provide, or I'll provide information to act it from Christina.
Morning would be awesome.
We're looking at right now, the placeholder right now is nine to twelve. That's for the placeholders in the schedule, that's Saturday to twenty eighth.
Okay, by three, I can be at the crap line count. Because I'm going to take the next week up. All right, so that brings us uh that brings us to a German, I think. There's no public, so uh, German is in order, so. I will adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance. Thank you for joining in from Prince George and at home. Get well and hopefully you'll get a ride. Thank you. Fingers crossed.
Bye.